All right, at one o'clock on Thursday, April the 13th, we'll go ahead and call the line county fiscal to order. Mr. Bobby Kemmings is gonna say our dedication and then we'll do the pledge.
Everybody bow please. Our heavenly Father, we thank you again for this day and Father, we just thank you and love you for what you do for us each and every day. Father, as we do the county business this day, Father, we just ask that you would be with us and that we make the right decisions for each person in this county. Father, I also pray that you would be over, look over our basketball team and our cheerleaders here for a phenomenal year that they've had and Father, I just pray your blessings upon them as well. Father, I also pray for our first responders across this Commonwealth and our local sheriff's department and jail department as well, that you would watch over them and keep them out of harm's way. Father, again, by your mercy and grace, please forgive us what we felt, even so many times, it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so the first item on the agenda is to recognize our 2022-2023 Line County Boys Basketball Team and the cheerleaders. So the first one that I'm gonna do is the cheerleaders. So Ms. Tash, if you don't mind to come up and the senior cheerleaders and then we'll bring all the cheerleaders up for our pictures. Alright, so this is the Line County Kentucky Vietnam, the 2022-2023 Line County Cheerleaders. Has deservedly received the Judge Executive Royal Line Distinguished Service Award. This is for your outstanding community involvement for, on, and off the court accomplishments. You go over the region to runner-up at the region tournament, is that correct? Third time, fourth time going to the state? Only the third maybe?
Third, maybe.
That's pretty awesome for a school of like 200, 400, how many do you have in this one? Not very many, yeah. Not very many. Through loyal, faithful, and unselfish efforts, a great contribution has been made to the county, state, and the nation. Done the 13th day of April in the year of our Lord 2023 and in the 169th year of Line County. So congratulate them. These ladies cheer the boys and girls on and off the court. A lot of paying went on throughout this town to go to the state tournament two years in a row. A lot of them do community service involvement, church involvement. Just a great team and I wish you all the best. Y'all wanna come up or your buddies know the... Congratulations. Next up, I'm gonna do Travis Curry first, if you don't mind to come on up. So on March 16th, this gentleman broke the state all-time leading scorer, is that correct? For points with 4,338 points. So he currently holds the record, he beat King Delly. And next year, he does have a sign, two of them on US 62, one at the five star and then one in front of, or near, of one in spirits and urgency. That sign will be updated, that drives his request if he wants to update it at the end of next year. So we can get a little bit of the points that he currently has when he broke the record or he can change it at the end of next year. So I just wanna congratulate you on being all-time leading scorer. Pretty sure my lifetime nobody's gonna beat ya. Singers, Walker Grayden, Jonathan. Coach Alex and Mike Sam's back there, kids. Alright, so again, Line County Kentucky being known that the 2022-23 Line County Boys Basketball Team has deservedly received the Judge Executive Royal Line Distinguished Service Award for outstanding community involvement for both on and off the basketball court. Through loyal, faithful, and unselfish efforts, a great contribution has been made to the county, state, and nation. Going to say back-to-back, lead eight both times. Congratulations. Done the 13th day of April in the year of our Lord 2023 and in the 169th year of Line County. Congratulations, seniors, you're all doing great. And I just know when we get this again next year, when y'all ready to begin, hopefully break all the titles. All the taller people on the back. I think Bobby would like just to say a few things to the cheerleaders and basketball players, match for you all as well. If there's anything that you all wanna say, I'll let Bobby speak. You all do not have to stay for the whole meeting, it's probably gonna be a little bit of a long meeting. Unless y'all wanna stay, but I'm sure you wanna get back to school.
Which one of y'all wanna fill my spot today? Nope? You want to, Jen? I will next time, I'll bet you did that. Hey, it's been a phenomenal year for you guys and I'm just proud that I was a part of it. And I appreciate each and every one of you kindness to me and I appreciate everyone at Miss Cook as well. I enjoy driving the cheerleaders as well, so. Being a bus driver has its perks, let me tell you. Every one of you have been very, very nice and just keep it up and each and every one of you will grow into a nice young man and a nice young woman. So as for me, as a bus driver, that means a lot when you've got kids, they will treat you that way. So thank y'all very much.
I just wanted to congratulate you on a terrific year, both the basketball team and the cheerleaders. But more importantly, I wanna thank you for being a role model in the community. There's a lot of young people look up to you as heroes in this community and your efforts off the court are, we congratulated this as well as your efforts on the court. Thank you for representing Line County well.
Y'all been on a wonderful job in our county this year. I mean, it's phenomenal what y'all done, so congratulations. I look forward to seeing you next year. I enjoy going to the ballgame and seeing everyone, so good deal, I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, congratulations to both of you. I know that you all will be back and we'll be seeing you in the state tournament. Just very, very proud of what you do on and off the court. Thank you. Alright, the next thing we have is visitor comments. Do you have any visitor comments? Alright, so we have rules. Well, I know we have, we have fire district and rural secondary road recommendation. Your visitor comment, just along with your...
Hello, my name's Judith Sanderson and I'm with Line County Fire District number two. And this is Colin Crowe, she is also a board member with the fire district two. And we're here today to speak to you about congestion at the fire department on election day.
Alright, can I do one thing, Mr. Sanderson? I have you second, I have rural secondary roads first and then I will have you immediately after them. Austin Hart?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for having me here today. My name's Austin Hart, I'm the Smithland Section Supervisor for the Transportation Cabinet. We handle construction and maintenance duties in Creighton, Illinois, instead of in Line County. With me today, I have the other supervisor in the section office, Bruce Gannfield. Kirk Trammell, another Smithland Section Engineer, as well as Jason Simmons, our acting foreman here in Line County. So you may have heard, we have had several changes in Line County with our leadership this past year. So Jason has graciously accepted the job, come down here on an acting basis for us. He's been a long time of foreman for us in Creighton. If you've got the chance to work with him, I think you'll find he's been an excellent foreman for us, he's done a great job down here. We are looking to fill that role on a permanent position basis. And we've interviewed applicants for that within the last few weeks and we hope to have someone brought on by the middle of the summer as well. Moving into our rural secondary recommendations today. You'll see, the budget has downed a little bit from previous years, not a lot. The greatest change has been an increase in asphalt costs. So year over year, we're looking at roughly a 20% increase in asphalt cost. And we're kinda stretching it with the roads that we propose here. It's probably gonna utilize every last bit of money that we have this year. And the reason, we may even use a little bit of next year's money. The reason I did that was just based on the road we hit. For us to get to, you know, nearby intersections on other state roads, we decided to stretch that just a little further, so. Generally, we're hovering around the $90,000 per mile for resurfacing. And I think you all would probably see that as well in your flex fund recommendations and FD 39 requests. Anywhere from 90,000 to 95,000, depending on how far away from the asphalt plants you are. It's kind of the number we target across the district this year. We are looking to pave on 778 and 818 this year. On the map, I tried to highlight some of the recent roads that we paved over the last few years. And that is just paving with rural secondary roads. You may recognize these roads from previous years that we've proposed. And luckily, Jim Smith actually paved those roads within the last few weeks here. He may have sent us out about as we were inspecting that and they were installing that work. Feel like normally when I present these, I'm telling you about paving, that may happen anywhere from two months to two years down the road. So luckily, you're able to see some of the action on it here recently as well.
I appreciate you.
Yes, ma'am. Any questions from the group? We are actually finished with that section of 1271. About two, two weeks ago, maybe a week and a half ago. All, we have finished all of that section, yes, sir.
Is the, is the pavement paved an inch, is that what it is?
We generally, we set it up for an inch. I generally try to, when I do my estimates, I add about a foot and a half to the width of the roadway. Lets us pave like an inch, inch and a tenth. Some spots maybe an inch and a quarter, if there's rutting there. We'll go through and pull what we call a scratch course across the ruts, but yes, generally an inch is what we base our estimates on.
Can you move on 62 under the interstate?
Yes, sir, that's actually, my foreman and I, we've looked at that, at that spot. We're planning to utilize our district funds and section funds to take care of that. Was in talks with Jim Smith contracting to utilize a different asphalt mix on that. There's some rutting that's developed at the off-ramps there at exit 40 and I'm looking to do that work at the same time. But yes, hoping within a month, we have that work done.
Would the off-ramp be concrete like the city net does stoplight at exit 40?
And that, that's why we haven't done it yet. We, we went back and forth. If it's asphalt, it'd be what we call the polymer modified. That's what we utilize on the main line of the interstate. If it's a lot still of a mix, you generally have to wait till further in the summer when it's hot. If you try laying it cooler temperatures, it doesn't work. We went back and forth, so I, I don't wanna answer one way or the other. I would, my preference would be concrete. Especially on those downhill sections like that, they, they push out a little bit. It'd be one or the other. Either way, we'll definitely fix it this year. It may be asphalt, so. Thank y'all for your time.
I appreciate it very much, thank you. Alright, so we'll need a motion to accept their recommendations. We have a motion by Bobby, we have a second answer. Second by Jan, any further discussion? All in favor of that? No? Recommendation passed. Alright, Mr. Sanderson and Ms. Crowe?
Yes, I have some follow-ups to want to do while I'm passing through.
Yes, absolutely.
As you're probably aware, we share the building of Line County Water District.
Yes.
And on election days, we're well aware, some election days are heavier than others. But the last one was very crowded. And one voter gave me a very cultural description of what it was, that I would use quackmire. And he said he couldn't get on the lot, he couldn't get off Highway 62, he was on to me. So he had to go around to the backside of the road, which many people are not aware of. I think the water department uses it as a maintenance truck to get in and out of there for some. But the top picture, if you'll notice, the car to the left, I think is an employee. And one on the right is my vehicle. Now parked there intentionally to show you how tight that is. Actually, it blocks the access to the drop box for the water department. So if anyone parked there at any time, there's no way to get to the drop box. And sadly, due to the location of the building on the lot. Only way you can use that drop box is if you're driving a bicycle or a boat's way. Because the turning radius is so tight, you got in a truck such as mine. You'd have to pull on that road, which is bar X access and back up and then make another turn. Get back onto bar X access road. So you can see how tight that might be. And so there's only, as you'll notice, three available parking spaces without locking the engine bays. And that's our main concern is it being a firehouse first. And we understand it can be a voting location second. But we had, both bays were blocked, there was no way, if there was a call, that they could have gone in quickly and got on tankers and engines and got out of there without causing problems. And we've also had problems with people disconnecting things to the engines, which would also delay them leaving promptly. So our reason for being here today is to ask for a partner somewhere, if you could work with us. If you'll notice, on picture three, you're looking east. That grassy area can be, could be converted and I think we may be provided three to four spaces.
We have, I have met with the Line County Water District, Mr. Fowler was also in that same meeting and I did confirm with them. So there is, I don't think you...
We weren't aware anyone had spoken to you.
If you look at the last one looking west, which is kind of more behind the building or on that side, there was a pile of gravel. That pile of gravel is gonna be moved and they were gonna open that up for more parking there. They were also gonna move all their equipment out of the area to allow for more parking. And they were actually gonna work on the road going from the fire department to Cruz Road to kind of make it a one-way-in park and you exit that way. I've also met with the sheriff in regards to some parking and traffic control for 62. The only one that I haven't had a chance to meet with is the new or interim director for the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet here in the county at the state highway garage to see if they would even be able to help with maybe some traffic issues or problems.
That's what we're concerned with.
But I think, I mean, I'm pretty sure we have the issue resolved, if I'm not mistaken.
That'd be great. Alright, we thank you very much.
You're welcome. And the water department's gonna close that day, they're gonna do driver only. But yes, they have been working with it, so we're gonna have it, should have it resolved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Carmen, did you have anything else to add or anything else to go with it?
Now, we, now we just talked about having a meeting and we never heard anything back, so we wanted to come, you know, that was in February.
Right.
So we just wanted to come and, you know, present kind of our concerns solidly.
Yes, we never had an election board meeting. We met with the Line County Water District on another issue. And at the end of that meeting, I asked them to make sure we were on the same page. They were, the sheriff and I met one-on-one about it as well, to make sure that we could have the issue resolved.
Yeah, we just weren't aware of it and, you know, we, we will probably still want to block off the bay.
Yes.
Where the trucks are and just have the meeting room as the voting facility. And then that way, if we have, you know, hopefully there won't be an emergency. And they'll have to get in there, but if there's a line through the bay, they're not gonna wanna move if the truck has to be fired up, you know, quickly. So, you know, we're probably just gonna shut the bay off and just have that, if that's conducive to everybody.
If, if I had, and I don't wanna have to talk about this, but I, I can, I can probably staff another deputy that day if I need to on the lakes days to, to help monitor that. I'll be here with the lakes duties as part of my constitutional duties as Lakes and Ocean Department clerk. But I can have another deputy and Sam to help monitor that. I still have to have them free as well, we need to be able to answer election complaints on that day. But I can try to, at least for the first time, that we're gonna try to do something a little different. I can try to, try to have one in that area staff or, or otherwise kind of monitor that.
Chief always puts a barrier there, but it wasn't moving. I don't think the other board member knew, he thought that somebody okayed it. But, you know, it, it was just an odd election, you know, where there was just a mob of people. You know, I don't look for May to be as big, it could be, but that one was huge and it was quite dangerous.
And we were very... So it could be a huge one next year in the presidential election.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that would work to stick there too, but I mean, I think, yeah, like the, the next one after we...
But even when you have just a board meeting, there's very little parking, so, you know, if that can be along with that, that'd be great. It would eliminate a lot of problems.
Thank you. Alright, the next I have is opening bids. We have a stack, so. Oh, okay, have another one. Alright, we'll open this one first. Alright, this is Abby Cole. So we have the 1973 3,400 diesel tractor. Twenty-five, twenty-five, 2,525. Then... John Deere 690D, is that the excavator, Sheriff?
Yeah, you, you can't...
That is the excavator?
Yeah, that, that one was never sold plus to the county, that was still with us. You all were gonna get that money, but it was already contracted, it was an iron plating or each other, so.
We'll notify her, let her know, she'll have to do that through the online.
And that was advertised to me yesterday when I told them, like, you can call the office, they have any voices.
Alright, 2004 John Deere HPX Gator, she's got 500. And 2005 John Deere M Gator with a missing serial number, 600. Alright, M Gator. Looks like he's doing maybe four or five pieces, this is from Ronnie Lewis. It just has M Gator and then it's got a number, an M Gator and a number, and he said for both, $800.
Here's Ronnie Lewis, 4,000 Ford tractor, 2,700, 7653.
2,100?
700, 76.
Yep.
154 seconds.
Alright, Jovi Brown, the excavating, the Chevy grain truck. 68, yes. He's got 1,567 dollars and they didn't have standards.
Jimmy, on the Volvo dump truck, I've got a bid, 4,509 dollars, nine cents.
4,509 dollars and nine cents.
On the 3,000 Ford tractor.
Yes.
I have a bid from Stan Kenneth of $2,000. On the 1995 Volvo single axle dump.
Yes.
I have a bid from Randy B, $3,251.
John Deere 780 tractor. Yeah, nine.
Alright.
Five hundred and twenty-five.
And who was that?
Jeff Knight.
Okay.
He got a double three thousand tractor.
Three thousand, alright.
Three thousand. Three thousand.
Five.
Oh, three thousand four tractor, Bobby Burks.
Okay.
Two thousand and ten dollars.
Okay.
Making the two thousand six Chevrolet truck.
Yes.
Nathan Corley.
Yep.
Five hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay.
For the John Deere seven fifty.
Okay.
Nathan Corley, two hundred and one dollars.
Okay.
Two thousand four John Deere HPX Gator.
Uh-huh.
Nathan Corley, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Okay.
And for the John Deere LV forty-one ten.
Yes.
Nathan Corley, two hundred and one dollars.
Okay.
And for the John Deere Gator.
Which one?
He said John Deere Gator.
There's a two thousand four and a, two thousand five and a two thousand five.
Okay, this was for the two thousand five, has a missing serial.
Okay.
Two hundred and one dollars.
And who was that?
Nathan Corley.
Okay.
On the nineteen seventy-three Ford diesel tractor.
Uh-huh.
One thousand three hundred and ten dollars, Randy P. On the two thousand and five John Deere M four.
Uh-huh.
Two hundred and one dollars, Nathan Corley.
O two LV fourteen.
Yes.
Yeah, nine.
Yep.
Two fifty, two hundred and fifty-nine. And on the salt spreader.
Oh, Curtis Salt Spreader, okay.
Jason Thompson.
Okay.
Two hundred and fifty.
Do we have any more?
That's the question.
That's all I got.
Just one on the truck. One on the Chevy grain truck and one on the extended cab truck.
So you all make a seventy of those bids as the highest and best bid that you wish. You all reject any of those bids that's not the highest and best bid that you wish. Can you read the other half?
I will. So the nineteen sixty-eight Chevy C fifty grain truck with dump bid, Joe Riley, one thousand five hundred and sixty-nine, sixty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. Uh, that's the only bid. Nineteen ninety-five Volvo GMC single axle dump truck, Tommy Melton, four thousand five hundred and nine dollars and nine cents. Uh, and then Mr. Pete also bid with three thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars. Curtis Salt Spreader with Honda Foley motor, Jason Thompson only bid two hundred and fifty dollars. Nineteen seventy-three three thousand four diesel tractor, high bid, uh, two thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-three cents. That was Ronnie Lewis.
Two thousand one, two thousand.
Seven, seven, six and fifty-three cents. The next one is Abby Hall, two thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. And there was four of the bids as well. Two thousand two John Deere LV forty-one ten tractor, Jeff Knight, two hundred and fifty. And the second bid was two hundred and one. Nineteen eighty-one to nineteen eighty-eight John Deere seven hundred and fifty tractor, Jeff Knight, five hundred and twenty-five dollars, Nathan Corley, two oh one. Two thousand four John Deere HPX Gator, Abby Hall, five hundred, Nathan Corley, three hundred and seventy-seven. Two thousand five John Deere M Gator. Ronnie Lewis, four hundred, Nathan Corley, two oh one. And the two thousand five John Deere M Gator with a missing serial number, Abby Hall, six hundred, Ronnie Lewis, four hundred, and then Nathan Corley was two oh one. And the two thousand six Chevy extended cab truck, Nathan Corley, five hundred and twenty-six.
So you guys don't think about motion on each one, right?
On each side.
Unless somebody wants to put together a cumulative or a bonus motion. And that can be a simple as saying, we have a new that we sell each item from surplus property through the lines to the, the finished engine.
The motion keep it there, so I like the motion to do that, put the motion that we say of each item that adds, we.
Alright, we have a motion by Bobby to take the highest bidder of each item listed.
Also.
We have a second by Quinn. We have any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Coz, no? Motion passed. Alright, next we got the minutes. And the motion bids. Alright, motion by Bobby, we got a third of the minutes, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Deb, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Coz, no? Motion passed. Kyle is here for the rope, uh, department update.
We've, since the last meeting, we've had a couple of storms, about ten or twelve trees down, we've got those cleaned up. Um, all of the mowers are up except for the boom mower, still figuring a hydraulic pump on you, but we plan to start mowing not this coming Monday, but the week of the twenty-fourth. And it'll be one cut, you know, it's not, hopefully this weather makes it jump a little bit and it shows when we mow. But, you know, we held off on the tractor, the one fifteen. Uh, had that, the existing one fifteen repaired, it's going to be fine for the summer. And we do have a bush hog that we may need to look at replacing. Cost-wise, it's going to get close to the, a new one to fix a few things on it, but we can, we're going to get started with it for sure. Uh, it's not, not anything we can't start the summer with and then think about it down the road. Uh, we use some class three root rep, which I don't know if you guys have seen on Bill Thompson Road, some of them are big as these chairs, to stabilize the shoulder and the creek bank in a spot there. It's pretty impressive rock and a repair to that spot. So, you know, if you're out and want to, want to see what that looks like, we put some of that scene under Rusty Ridge, the bridge there on Rusty Ridge, we dated some there, uh, just today, or, yeah, today. Uh, we placed an order, order for culverts with John Steel, uh, beating the GI one increase and it just, that's just for our inventory. And the only, we've got a few driveway pipes coming up, but, uh, we do have one we want to do on Glen Chapel Road, which is the cross drain. We'll close that road, you know, from eight o'clock till noon, one o'clock when we get that cross drain in. That's, we're still working on the funding, I think, for that, but other than that, everything's chugging right along.
Hey Kyle, I want to explain, I, I met with Jason a little about that bush hog.
Bush hog, yep.
And my understanding, the tire bush hog was around eighteen or nineteen thousand, is that right?
Yes.
Thirteen to fifteen, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a rear part, there's a rear part of the wheel, marks just seven thousand, that's not including the, but the part of the, the real bush hog.
That's correct, yeah. That's not any of the mowing part, it's the, the tandem wheels that support it on the back. Uh, there's, it's just over time, there's, it's bent and beyond repair. So, you know, it's, we got an updated quote from H and R yesterday and it was actually, uh, fourteen thousand three hundred dollars.
That's better than what he's, I met with him two, three days ago, he's talking to me about eighteen.
No, that's the, that's the parts for the one we have.
That's just ours, fourteen thousand for repairs and it's like seventeen to eighteen for.
And it wears the tires in such a way, what we have now, that, and they're four hundred, the six hundred dollars for a tire, so. Uh, but yes, to replace it with the, the exact same thing with the walking tandems on the back would be, uh, it was quoted at eighteen, almost nineteen thousand.
Yeah.
So, and fourteen three for fixing this one. But we, like I said, we can start on it and get going that direction. Not, you, not purchasing that tractor in that place kind of maybe helps out with the thinking of replacing that bush hog.
Yeah, they fixed the tractor, they, Tommy opted to fix the tractors, blow over like four hundred dollars, I'd like to, to fix it versus, versus purchasing a new one. Uh, at the moment, because he feels the, the one that we had kind of gotten it next to and on wasn't going to be strong enough or.
Yeah, it's, uh, kind of like when you're buying a car, like, uh, I know Chevy trucks, so like an SLE or a work truck model, that's, that tractor was less of that, a lesser grade package, it was the same hundred and fifteen horse, but when you compare it to the one we have to fix it, it's, we keep this one and save the money on that for the tractor that we would want, you know? And that's all hydraulic controls, front wheel assist, there's little changes to all that stuff that works better for mowing than, the one they wanted to sell us was more of a, a farming tractor, I guess you could say.
So if that bush hog breaks and goes down, are you all, what's that going to do about the hog?
Well.
You have, you have a backup.
We have one backup, that's not, the two that we use in constant service, the backup is not the same, so we can't use parts from it, we can't hook it up and get it going, but it hasn't run to my knowledge in probably three or four years. So there is a, a case that we might need something on it when we get it going, you know?
So how, if something goes bad or, how quick, if your court says later on to buy one, how quick, does it have to stop?
They, they do have, uh, two as of right now on the lot at H and R, and of course their, their blanket's pretty big, so if they didn't have one at Hopkinsville, they probably could still come up with one.
Or something else, like the boom mowers down there.
Yep. And I haven't got, I'm waiting on the JJ Hydraulics up the road here, who's been helping us out with that, and he's putting a price together for a pump and the manufacturer or representative in Nashville that we buy parts from, I've got a quote coming from them, but it'll, that pump will be thirty-five hundred to forty-five hundred dollars. But that's all the boom mowers in need of and it'll be gone.
What was the fifty-eight hundred dollar bill?
Uh.
Did you look at it?
Yeah, but it was stuck out.
That was the, so on the boom mower, there's tandem pumps on the front of it. And the first one was the pump nearest the engine that, I tore it apart and got with CMI in Nashville, who's an Alamo dealer. And per their service department, we were looking at a pump failure there with, uh, some specs on the, the pistons in the pump and it's not, it didn't cure our problem. The, this other pump is the one that bolts directly to that one, because they work in tandem together and so.
Any other questions?
Appreciate you cleaning all that stuff up, Donna.
Yes, sir. That other one didn't take long to come down, did it?
It was built the next day.
He's totally up to it, it's just you're in April and I understand why you're asking, because if it goes down, you know, how quick? So, it, what I was telling Mr. Sutton is if you all wish to, you could pass a motion to give Jamie the authority to immediately purchase the new bush hog at any point in time, the contingency realizes that the old one there was down. It just sounds like that's what you all may want to do, you just want to see how long you get out of this one, but you might not want to wait until the next fiscal quarter to go and get the new one to happen.
Uh, maybe that would give Jamie the authority to purchase a, a new bush hog in the event that she feels is necessary and in case this other one goes down, it'd be, I heard the judge would do that.
We have a motion, I'm going to say it by Jeff, to give myself the authority to authorize the purchase of a bush hog if one of the work to go down and it was needed. At, yes, at the, well, in the supervision of the open department as well. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Coz, no? Alright, sheriff vehicle purchase options, I'm going to let Sheriff White explain this. This is a little, uh, similar to what, uh, General Evolution had done about being able to purchase vehicles from another governmental entity, uh, without going for the whole, uh, yeah, bidding process and different things and so.
Just, uh, just a little history, uh, last year we, uh, we were forced to, uh, accelerate our purchase of a new tax vendor, uh, for our taxes. Uh, the company that we've been using, a lot of the counties we've been using, which is Tax Master, that design, they were bought out by Wisconsin firm, long story short, they liquidized basically all their assets in Kentucky down to one or two people. Um, and we, our system is failing and so we had five new tax, uh, management software systems. So we utilized the money that was budgeted for a car and we gave you all the balance of that money back, uh, last year in order to, uh, so we forfeited buying a car. The problem with that is we've had a couple of cars go down, I want to thank Kyle, worked on a lot of things, helped us prepare those for auction. Uh, uh, those vehicles were both, uh, exceeded the value to repair them, uh, with various things. So we've been down some cars, we've got another one that are limping, we've also wrecked one, we get a dealer, uh, the deputy never saw it coming, it was his second night working for us. Uh, and that vehicle was totaled out by CAKO, uh, we got about twenty-two thousand and some change, uh, for that, uh, that vehicle. We got all the equipment out of that vehicle and salvaged it, uh, with the exception of the cage and the push bar and silo and stuff like that. But, uh, everything else we were able to, we were able to salvage. Uh, so we got twenty-two thousand, uh, from that payout on that two thousand eighteen Dodge Charger. Uh, we have twenty thousand plus, I think, in the, in the budget, uh, this year to, what we generally have done with the sheriff's offices, you all know, the ABC restricted funds, uh, are primarily by statute, uh, supposed to be used for policing. And that's the ton that they, that the statute has in it and that's what we usually buy cars out of. And so we were trying to hold out for maybe a four-wheel drive vehicle of some kind, uh, because in a weird time we can really, really use them. But, uh, now that we're so low on cruisers right now and we've got another one that's about to go down, um, there's a couple of things that's happened, it's unfortunate, we've got about sixty-seven thousand in ABC restricted use funds, uh, for that purpose. Uh, and so, uh, again, we have twenty thousand plus, it's in term budget here to the end of June and then we got a twenty-two thousand on our insurance payment, that's about a hundred and nine thousand, six hundred fifty-four dollars. And that's for cars and into equipment. So what I, what I did is I contacted the Kentucky State Police, because I was told they were getting out of the, the Dodge Charger business. Dodge, Dodge is getting out of the Charger police business, uh, they're phasing it out, it's supposed to be twenty-twenty-four models, but it's actually going to be probably extended in twenty-twenty-five. Uh, state police were told that about a year ago, so they're phasing out, they're going to Tahoe's, which are a much more expensive vehicle, but they're probably safer for the officer on the road. Longer story short is they are going to surplus a bunch of equipment and they will surplus it to us. Uh, that's cages, uh, in some cases push bars, that's bar lights, uh, and console equipment. That equipment, counting a computer, not counting an in-car camera, we don't do those anyways when CAKO's in operation, is, it used to be about ten to twelve thousand dollars, uh, Judge jumped in here at any time. That number has gone up to about eighteen thousand dollars just for the basic components for a police car. So once you buy the car or whatever, truck, car, SUV, wherever you get, you got to put eighteen thousand dollars in it just to, just to meet ocean and everything else. So very mind rattling to me. very mind rattling to me on, on how some, some of this, uh, works, but, so what we did is, uh, we need some cars, and so I've been shopping around, and you can't find it, uh, Chevrolet and Ford have gone to order-only specialty fleet deals for like police vehicles. So if you don't order them during their buying, which may be sixty or seventy-five days, you forfeit, there's not dealers that are gonna have them on their lot, they're actual police package cars, they're only gonna make some deal. So Dodge is the only dealership that's out there that still is making some of these, well, they invited us down to Mayfield the other day, they had a Detroit rep down there, and he said they're doing, they're fixing to do the same thing. They're gonna open up one more round of the twenty-twenty-three order periods, but they will not guarantee that we can get a car during this fiscal year. So what that has led me to do is to search nationwide to try to find vehicles, and about the best deal I can find is going to Missouri and buying from another government agency, Missouri Highway Patrol, they trade their cars in at fifty to fifty-four thousand miles. Uh, they trade their SUVs in a little more higher mileage than that, um, just a basic white Ford Charger like we have in the twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-two year model is anywhere from twenty thousand to twenty-seven thousand. And that's a pretty good deal, um, they do a twenty-eight point inspection on.
What's the new one cost?
A new one costs thirty-five, not counting the equipment, you'll get a little bit of equipment with some of these, but these have never had a cage in them, so you won't get a cage. Kentucky State Police is gonna surplus all of the other equipment to us, so the equipment cost will just be labor, putting them in, uh, and anything that we don't have, but we're gonna try to salvage as much stuff on there, so, what, the problem is, and the reason I'm coming with this report, the reason I told you all this new thing to tell you this, is it's first come, first served with the Missouri Highway Patrol, they sell to other governmental agencies only, they don't sell to the public. So they sell to other, they've been doing this for a long time, Graves County used to do it, we actually have a vehicle that's from Graves County, they surplus it to us at Silver Tahoe, that was in Missouri, it's a K-9 vehicle, it's a Missouri Highway Patrol vehicle, um, I talked to the people at their fleet, uh, place, and essentially they say, it's first come, first served. What we have today, the day I called them, they had four Chargers in the date range, the, the date range is important, the twenty to twenty-two is what the equipment that KSV has that would fit, that they would surplus to us for free, um, so tomorrow, so I called them back a week later, my father passed away, and then I was on, and I went, I called them back after that, all those vehicles were gone, and they had new vehicles with different prices, prices on them then. So you can send them a PO and say, I want three cars, this tub, this year model, and if they got them, you get them, and if you drive over there, they put them on, they do it, they've done a twenty-eight point inspection, they'll put them on a rack, they'll let you look at them, like if I could hire Kyle on his day off and pay him or bring him over there with me, he could look at them and say, hey, this is, this is, because he knows those cars, uh, not to, not to call them out on that, he can say, you don't want this one, or you do want this one, and if that happens, um, if we don't like any of those, we can cancel the PO, there's no penalty, so they'll do that, but it is first come, first served, and we can't, we can't, uh, I, I would need the authority of a vehicle, much like we did Jamie, just our judge, uh, Green Smith, a minute ago, uh, much like we did Steve Leish, to have a, uh, the autonomy to be able to, to do that, uh, we're looking at trying to get three, uh, because that's what, that's what we're gonna need, uh, hiring these CSOs and the transports that we're doing now is, is getting, getting to be quite a bit, so, um, we got that one car that's going down, we're gonna try to make it work, set a hundred and twenty-one thousand in, we're gonna try to keep it, you know, operational, but, um, I wanna keep my guys that are working the road naturally causing the best cars I can.
You say the state police cages not for free?
They're gonna surplus them to you for serving air malls, uh, for serving your malls, yes, sir.
We can surplus, uh, there's KRS that says we can get to another governmental entity for the, uh, we can transfer back and forth, the biggest thing is, is he might get a car for twenty thousand, and you might be able to get a new one for thirty thousand, but you're gonna be a year, if not longer.
That's right.
Getting that new car, I know the fire chief at Edible waited, I think, twelve to sixteen months for his pickup truck, I don't know how long Michael Williams waited at EMS to get his vehicle, it's just.
Our oldest vehicle.
We're waiting a year.
Our oldest vehicle right now is about eight years old, and our newest vehicle is almost three years, or two years old, that one that I was driving today to, to him, so. I, I would just ask for permission from the court to, uh, to be able to have that option, uh, and I wouldn't do anything without submitting a purchase order anyway, but I, I, I would need that, because I can't wait, they won't hold anything for us, and I can't wait until, they will hold me if we give them a purchase order, but I can't wait till the next fiscal report meeting to get it approved, because those vehicles will be gone, because that's the way they do just fleet sales. Yeah, they, they actually, that's a good question, Missouri Highway Patrol has multiple color vehicles, but we would stay with white primarily, the only thing we would do yet too is a silver, and that, that's for insurance purposes, our CAKO likes us to have the white suit, because we have less wrecks and whiten's, I guess, I don't know.
That's hard to handle.
Alright, yeah, so, um, I mean, I'll make a motion to give the sheriff the authorization to purchase three separate, uh, vehicles, each one being no more than twenty-eight thousand apiece, uh, to purchase those from another governmental entity, just as we did with the checker. To have a motion by myself and a second by Quinn, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion pass. We're gonna skip down real quick, we're gonna go ahead and do number twenty-three, uh, Leanne is here for the appoint of the Library Board of Trustees, and I make a motion to reappoint Alex Sutton to the Lyon County Public Library Board of Trustees, I have spoke to, uh, Mr. Sutton, he is willing to serve again, uh, and his term would expire in four years, yes, uh, so I just need to say that. We have a motion by myself and a second by Jeff, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion pass. Alright, you, you're welcome. Bobby said you go work. Alright, we have several resolutions, uh, I know the county attorney is so happy with all these resolutions today. Uh, the first one is the West Park KBDI grant resolution, um, Lee, take it away.
I have the motion and a second, I will read the resolution and then let you all.
So a motion by Quinn, second by Bobby.
This will be the first and only reading of Lyon County Kentucky Resolution Number Zero Six Two Thousand and Twenty.
You do, there's seven of them, so I have four, five, and then you should have one for six. Yeah, I have four, five, and six.
I got five and six.
These are the, the three that I had in regards to. We may need to go check those. There should be a West Park KDA, and then there's a CED resolution. Six will be with you, it was lighter on.
Would you all consider passing a high level of basicness?
Yes. Yep. Alright. Lee's gonna look over, um, the resolutions, because we do have several, uh, maybe that is not here today, she was in Frankfurt. So we're gonna go ahead and go down to the number fourteen and look at the appointment of the Lyon County Public Properties Corporation members, and number fifteen, which is the appointment of the Lyon County Development Corporation members, these are our public and properties, and I have these. So Wade is, uh, listed on there, and I want to tell you. There's a Kathy, and there's Bobby Kathy, Jeff, there's you and Kristy Kathy, and, um, so this has to do with the Judicial Center and then some other property that the county owns, but we'll need a motion to, um, appoint the boards, it's basically removing Wade and replacing Wade, uh, myself on both, um, so we'll do the Public Properties Corporation members, we'll need a motion to appoint myself and, as I'm replacing Wade. We have a motion by Bobby, we have a second. Second by Quinn, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion pass. Alright, it's the same on the Development Corporation, uh, on that one, Quinn, you're on it, Bobby, you're on it, and I would be replacing Wade. Uh, Lori Depp is also on it, Krista's on it, and Jeff, you're the vice president. We have a motion by Quinn, second by Jeff. Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Opposed, no? Motion pass. Alright, as he is working on the, the resolutions, we will go down to the judicial H-bat contract. You should have three estimates paper flipped together, all of them should be Merco. Uh, Merco is who currently has the contract, if I'm not mistaken. Merco is three thousand three hundred and sixty, Jeff is five thousand seven hundred, and HMC. There's this thirty-six hundred, um, I mean, we already got Merco, Merco is very familiar with the equipment. Alright, we have a motion by Bobby to, uh, accept Merco's bid. Second by Jeff, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion pass. Alright, Lee is ready on all these resolutions.
So if you ladies and gentlemen would draw your attention to Lyon County Kentucky Resolution Number Zero Six Two Thousand and Thirty-three, and set it aside. If you draw your attention to Lyon County Kentucky Resolution Number Zero Four Two Thousand and Twenty-three, that's the one that we need to look at today. Um, I believe there was already a motion and a second to pass the resolution, I will tell you all the difference in these two resolutions. Oh four has an amount, that's about thirty-four dollars less than oh six, and I'm going to like press the pass oh four rather than oh six to reflect the cost of a floodplain study. So Lyon County Resolution Zero Four Two Thousand and Twenty-three assists a resolution, I will be reading this resolution in a summary form only. A complete copy of this resolution is available in the office of the Lyon County Judge Executive during normal business hours. Lyon County Kentucky Resolution Zero Four Two Thousand and Twenty-three is a resolution of Lyon County Kentucky supporting the submission of an economic development fund application to the Kentucky Economic Development Cabinet of Lyon County for floodplain analysis at the Pinyroll West Park located within Lyon County. If you all would skip down to lead to the fifth whereas, whereas the line, for the reasons stated herein, desires to support the request of the Pinyroll West Park Industrial Development Authority for thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents in funding for the project from the Kentucky Economic Development Cabinet to the Economic Development Funds Program, which funding will enable the Pinyroll West Park Industrial Development Authority to provide substantial employment for residents of the county, and whereas it is appropriate that this resolution be announced in order to evidence such support, now therefore may be resolved as Lyon County is followed, section one, it is hereby now determined and declared that the statements and facts before and the preambles of this resolution are true and accurate in all respects, and the preamble and all the recitals herein are incorporated into this resolution by reference as set forth in the document herein. Section two, Lyon County hereby is forced to request of the Pinyroll West Park Industrial Development Authority for funding from the Kentucky Economic Development Cabinet to the Economic Development Fund for the floodplain analysis and engineering study in the Pinyroll West Park Industrial Park. Furthermore, Lyon County agrees to be responsible for administering the funds awarded from the Economic Development Fund and shall make disbursements therefore in accordance with the guidelines of the, of the Economic Development Fund. Section three, this resolution should be in full force pending from and after its adoption. The greatest summary that I can provide you in this is that this is for Lyon County to approve funds which are coming from the state economic development cabinet to the West Park side for a funding study. You are not funding this, you just have to pass the resolutions so that they may receive the funds. This has been the first and only reading of Lyon County Kentucky Resolution Number Zero Four Two Thousand and Twenty-three.
So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion, we already had one, uh, Quinn made the motion while setting it, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion pass. The next one is the Resolution Oh Five Twenty-three, it's the RD double A P authorizing a designation of SPGP resolution, uh, which will name the Pinyroll Area Development District as the SPGP. Same option. We have a motion about Bobby, we have a second, second.
This will be the first and only reading of Lyon County Kentucky Resolution Zero Five Two Thousand and Twenty-three. I will be reading this resolution in a summary form only, a complete copy of this resolution is available in the office of the Lyon County Judge Executive during normal business hours. Lyon County Kentucky Resolution Zero Five Two Thousand and Twenty-three is the adoption of a resolution of Lyon County District designation of the Pinyroll Area Development District special purpose government entity to receive Tennessee Valley Forty funds under the Regional Development Agency Assistance Program, and authorizing the filing of the Regional Development Agency Assistance Program proposal of grant application for thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, and ARDAP funds of the Department for Local Government, authorizing the designated Pinyroll Area Development District special purpose government entity to act as the authorized correspondent for this project. If you all would skip down to the same whereas, whereas is designated with the ARDAP funds available to the county, pursuant to KRS Chapter Ninety-Six, if those certain obligations and responsibilities of the county will require some section one, approval of this satisfaction application will be transmitted to D L G for approval to the designation of a special purpose government entity as defined in KRS Six to Five Eight Oh One Oh, some section nine, and currents from the respective state representatives and state senators. Now, it will be resolved on the thirteenth of April Two Thousand and Twenty-three of the Lyon County Fiscal Court as follows. The following special purpose government entity is designated to receive the Regional Development Agency Assistance Program funds, that is gonna be the Pat District, Jason Benson is the executive director in Hopkinsville. And next, an ARDAP proposal or application on behalf of Lyon County for ARDAP monies up to thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars for the Pinyroll West Park for the twenty-second project, so we submitted to the D L G, the county should provide such additional information and further documentation as may be required in the designated SPGs for act as the authorized correspondent for this project. The most simple summary that I make from half of this resolution assists the other half of the floodplain study. Again, ladies and gentlemen, you all are not funding this, you are only approving the application of funds from the TBA monies to funding other half of this project. This has been the first and only reading of Lyon County Kentucky Resolution Number Zero Five Two Thousand and Twenty-three.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion pass. Alright, the next thing we have is, I had submitted a, I guess, a grant for discretionary funds, uh, for Eschler. Bobby, is that near the district? Bobby's.
Yes.
That is where Green Steakhouse is, um, so they're gonna pay thirty-five thousand, eighty dollars for that project. So I know there is a resolution in here, the levels of contract. So we will need a motion to approve the fixing of Eschler Loop for the use of discretionary funds, and they will provide up to thirty-five thousand, eighty dollars in reimbursement on state funds. We have a motion by Bobby. We have a second.
This will be the first and only reading of Lyon County Resolution Zero-Six-Two Thousand and Twenty-three. Again, I will be reading this resolution in a summary form only. A complete copy of this resolution is available in the office of the Lyon County Judge Executive during normal business hours. Lyon County Kentucky Resolution Number Zero-Six-Two Thousand and Twenty-three is the adoption of a resolution of Lyon County District Court authorizing the filing of the Kentucky House Bill One, County Clerk's election equipment.
Eschler Loop. Yes.
My apologies. Resolution Zero-Six-Two Thousand and Twenty-three is a resolution adopting and permitting the execution of a memorandum of agreement between the Lyon County Fiscal Board and Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Highway, in the amount of thirty-five thousand and eighty dollars for that Eschler Loop project. Here it is all by the Fiscal Board as follows. The Fiscal Board, hereby verifiable and adopted all statements, representations, warranties, covenants, and agreements contained in said agreement as hereby accepted ones, provided in said agreement, by such acceptance agreed to all the terms and conditions herein stated. Further, the Judge Executive of the county is hereby authorized and directed to sign this agreement as set forth on behalf of Lyon County Fiscal Board, Fiscal Board, and that the Lake of Lyon County is hereby authorized and directed to certify there too. This has been the first and only reading of Lyon County Resolution Zero-Six-Two Thousand and Twenty-three, Resolution Regarding Eschler Loop.
Do they feel like that will help?
Yes.
Because it's possible.
They, uh, we did an estimate. Uh, Jim Smith came out and looked at it for the paving and the gold. I submitted a voluntary estimate to him, and that is all they ever heard. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. Oppose, no. Motion passed. All right, the next one is for the pulling equipment. Uh, as you all remember, a year ago, uh, pulling equipment was purchased. It was roughly, I think, a hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars. Uh, you originally got fifteen thousand dollars back. The state has now come back and said, we're gonna give you more money back on that project, which is excellent. So I've applied for seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars, uh, to bring back to the county in the purchase of that pulling equipment. So we will have to pass a resolution so I can submit that grant to the state. So we'll need a motion.
This will be the first and only reading of Lyon County Kentucky Resolution Number Zero-Six-Two-Thousand-and-Twenty-three. Again, I will be reading this resolution in a summary form only. A complete copy of this resolution is available in the office of the Lyon County Judge Executive toward the Lyon County Clerk during normal business hours. Lyon County Kentucky Resolution Number Zero-Six-Two Thousand and Twenty-three is the adoption of a resolution of Lyon County Fiscal Board authorizing the filing of the Kentucky House Bill One, County Clerk's election equipment grant application for up to seventy-five thousand, nine hundred dollars in House Bill One project funds with the Department for Local Government, authorizing and directing the Lyon County Judge Executive to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by the Department of Local Government to carry out this project, and authorizing the Judge Executive to act as the authorized correspondent for this project. Whereas Lyon County desires to purchase election equipment in regard to state board elections on behalf of the residents of Lyon County, whereas it is brandised at House Bill One, these available to the county for purposes stated herein pursuant to the Two Thousand and Twenty-two Kentucky General Assembly House Bill One, legislature bill, impose certain obligations and responsibilities upon the county and will require, among other things, subsection one, approval of the satisfactory application transmitted to the state board of elections for approval, and subsection two, other obligations of the county in connection with receiving House Bill One grant monies for purposes stated therein. Now therefore may it resolve on the thirteenth day of April, Two Thousand and Twenty-three, by the Lyon County Fiscal Board as follows. The House Bill One, County Clerk election project grant application on behalf of the county for House Bill One monies up to seventy-five thousand, nine hundred dollars for County Clerk election equipment project. Projects should be submitted to the Department of Local Government. The county should provide some additional information for such documentation as may be required by the County Judge Executive's sole act as authorized correspondent for this project. This has been the first and only reading of Lyon County Kentucky Resolution Zero-Six-Two Thousand and Twenty-three.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. Oppose, no. Motion passed. The next one is our county vote date for fiscal year Twenty-Twenty-four agreement and resolution. Uh, we already get eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. This is an increase from last year. So we'll need a motion, um, for the resolution and the second. All right, so we have a motion by Bobby and a second budget.
This will be the first and only reading of Lyon County Kentucky Resolution Zero-Eight-Two-Thousand-and-Twenty-three. Y'all know by now, I'm gonna read it in a summary form only. Lyon County Kentucky Resolution Zero-Eight-Two Thousand and Twenty-three is a resolution adopting and permitting the execution of a county rotating corporate contract between the Fiscal Board and Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Rural and Physical Labor Fiscal Year, beginning July, One, Two Thousand and Twenty-three, is provided in the Kentucky law statutes and the central law roads and streets referred to the areas being part of the county grid system. Here it is all by the Fiscal Board as follows. The Fiscal Board, hereby set all roads and streets referred to in said contract as being part of the county grid system. The Fiscal Board, hereby ratified and adopted all statements, representations, warranties, covenants, and agreements contained in said contract and is hereby accepted contract and by such acceptance agreed to all the terms herein stated. The County Judge Executive, hereby authorizing and directing to sign said contracts, as set forth on behalf of the Fiscal Board of Lyon County, and the County Clerk of Lyon County, is hereby authorized and directed to certify there too. This has been the first and only reading of Lyon County Kentucky Resolution Zero-Eight-Two Thousand and Twenty-three.
Do we have any other discussion? All in favor, aye. Oppose, no. Motion passed. All right, we have done the judicial H-back contract. All right, paying the cell phones. Uh, I sent you all an email in regards from the auditor about stipends, uh, where a couple employees do get paid, um, because they have a personal phone, and were paid in twenty-five dollars a month, um, for twelve months. So the auditors have now come back and said, no, you cannot pay that stipend at twelve dollars and fifty cents. So we either have to add it to their salary, break down with three hundred and twenty dollars, uh, and add it to their salary for purchase on the phone. What would your job like to see then?
Is there a reason why they come back?
It's KRS.
So they have a statute.
Yeah, there's statute. It says you can't do it.
So it's one or two options, add to the salary or, or
Or purchase a home. Talk about entrepreneurship for It would be. And that would be my recommendation, because they're running around to purchase a home, which is anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty, if they don't have a home, if not more.
Is there?
You know, really.
They, they can do the, like, the thirteen or whatever. It's only like a hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
More like what, and, uh, used is what I wanted to say.
This would, uh, we've already addressed the, the jailer under his budget. Um, he was able to make a decision, but I think it affects Tom, Scott, calling. Hmm, no, because third issue, um, was it's only like to refer, um, Scott, um, maybe more. No, I think it's, um, well, it was Dennis, Melooshia, and George. They were all under the jailer. Yes, I'm pretty sure it's just Scott and Tom. No, I did, I had to call him because I take pictures and all that.
Why am I commotion?
To the staff. All right, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion by Bobby and a second by Jeff to take the stipend. And the twenty-five dollars a month and add it to the respective salaries.
It is to wash.
It is, yep. We just take that amount and she'll divide it up and just put it on the salary. All in favor, aye. Oppose, no. Motion passed. All right, next we have a manual standing order to approve recurring expenses. Uh, myself, Krista, and I have looked over this. To my understanding, nothing has changed. All right, we have a motion by Quinn to approve the standing orders. Also. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. Oppose, no. Motion passed. We should have transfers. We have a motion by Bobby to have early transfers. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any discussion? Any questions? All in favor, aye. Oppose, no. Motion passed. All right, we should have the finance officers' report, the treasurer's report, clerk's reports, and the sheriff's reports. Uh, one of the very last things that's in there that hang in is also the conservation district's budget. We just note that we did receive that from them. That is in there. Then we have planks. Any issues on planks? Can we potentially look at a special call meeting within the next, before the end of the month? Hope Bush, Abby has good friend, otherwise. Any particular day you'd have? Anytime. The twenty-seventh at nine? And by doing Thursday until the twenty-seventh at nine? I'll go get ready.
I know I need fuel.
I'll get it ready.
No, that's all right. We'll be out.
All right, I do one thing, I do have one thing that we've got to go to executive session.
If you all put that motion up, I'll do it.
I'm gonna make a motion that we go into executive session.
At this time, after a affirmative vote there long, Lyon County Fiscal Board will go into executive session. The provisions appear as subsequent lines of the term, section one, subsection two, the speciality of the law, the disclosure of this business, and individual
Sheriff, will you just hit the stop button? Don't do anything else, but just hit the stop button?
Yes, ma'am. The red button.
The red button. You should be able to just